Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the January fourteenth, two thousand and twenty Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. And we'll start with roll call on the left. Kathy Missin, make your hands.
Jared Ford.
Sean Anderson.
John Meyer.
Charlotte Startis.
Roz Hewitt.
Should've.
You don't want to know that look.
Brian Ray.
Sophie Chack.
I will appoint Jared for Lindsey. Moving on to public hearing, A Z two thousand and nineteen, one six two zero, continuation of Peter Higgins, requesting a special permit for gravel excavation on property located at thirteen twenty-seven Norwich Road, Plainfield, MAP five, block four C, lot nine, RA thirty, zoning district.
Good morning or good afternoon. Andrew Barnes, Mr. Higgins is here. What was very important from last time is that the engineer is still working on it in February. Surveying is done. I think he has a copy of that here for you. The good news is I think both of those individuals have been contacted as zoning enforcement officer. So remain in progress. He did have the holidays to deal with everybody's taking vacations, which the bottom line is if you are a copy of the survey, we have that here now.
Okay, so you can submit that to the office. So you do not have the plans to present for public hearing tonight.
That's correct. The engineer, Ryan, will send you a list?
I have not received an engineer. So I just want to hold off until the engineer and survey get me everything up.
Okay, so we're looking for a continuance to February.
Yes. I just want to be sure you're able to give your engineer.
Okay, so they are not prepared to present at this meeting, but will be in February. So entertain a motion to continue the public hearing to February. I have a motion by John. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Sean. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Okay, public hearing scheduled, uh, continue to February. Thank you. Item B, Z two thousand and nineteen, one six six six, continuation of Plainfield Garages and Storage LLC, requesting a special permit for construction operation of a concrete batch plant at ninety-one, one oh five Plainfield Pike Road, Plainfield, MAP seventeen, block thirty-six, lot thirty-three, Iowa zoning district. Had to make it a little longer for you, Norm.
For the record, I've been waiting for it, representing the cabinet, obviously. I understand people, people in engineering, is here to go through this plan as well. You may recall that this was, uh, public hearing is open, did people ask on the meeting, but we requested this a little bit late, um, in part to get comments from CME Engineering Consulting and years, which we have recently received and frankly have taken into account in the document as part of our presentation tonight. One of the other issues that came up at the last public hearing was the question of water passing within the area to support this project. We do have some to present on that, but I'd like Mr. Tebo to go through his plan with you and submit to you the documents that he has currently, both from CME and from Donak. Thank you.
Thank you. For the record, I'm Norm Sebo, Killingley Engineering Associates, and I am here representing Plainfield Garages and Stores this evening. As you know, we were here before you last month. I gave you a lot of the nuts and bolts of regard to the, uh, to the batch plant operations and how they go, they want to go about doing this. So, um, there were a couple of outstanding items that I think came up at that meeting. One of them I think was typically was the question about, about water and water supply and the potential, uh, for, you know, the possibility of us completing the water table here. Uh, one of the things I can tell you is that, you know, the watershed that actually, you know, uh, this, this site rests within nearly four thousand acres. It's, it's quite an expansive watershed. Well drilling reports for, you know, the house up front, four human residential up front is there's over thirty gallons a minute available there. And, uh, and a recent well drilled for the abiding property of Plainfield Materials was done by Donak, and they, that site deals just over ten gallons a minute and is six hundred feet deep. Storage in the well is nine hundred gallons of the ten gallon permitted pump installed in the well. The well has the capability of discharging six hundred gallons per hour into the onsite storage tank connected to the dust control equipment. The recovery rate is one point five hours to replenish the storage in the well in the off times. Uh, so that's, that's the, the next door property. With regard to our property, um, I, I have a second letter from Donak regarding the concrete batch plant at one oh five Plainfield Pike, to whom I may concern. This is to verify that to the best of our knowledge, there is sufficient water in the aquifer that would be supplying the above mentioned project. This is based on our knowledge of wells in the area, which are true artesian and high grade wells. This is from Linda South, registered cemetery in, uh, Donak. I did submit a copy of that, uh, for the record, uh, to, um, to Ryan earlier this week. Secondly, I think it's important to note, um, one, one of the things with regards to wells, any withdrawals of less than fifty thousand gallons a day are not monitored or or sanctioned by the state of Connecticut. Anything over fifty thousand gallons a day reported what's called the inversion, where I mean conversions are either the diversion of steam to accept water or taking water out of the ground, taking water out of the pond, uh, and, and, uh, or any combination of these, the nexus of fifty thousand gallons a day. In order for this particular facility to use fifty thousand gallons a day, they would have to build somewhere in the realm of ninety to ninety-five trucks of concrete a day in order to use that much water. And that's, it's just not physically possible in this plant to, to produce that kind, uh, that kind of concrete here. So, uh, we are well within the framework set forth by the, the state of Connecticut and, and by virtue of the, uh, the well reports that we received from Donak, we truly feel that, um, the, the, uh, drawing of water from the aquifer for the particular site and for this particular activity will not detriment affect the water table here. One of the other, uh, issues that, uh, that we sort of left standing last month was a review by CME Associates. We did visit the site, myself and, uh, and Mr. Brayden, uh, and representatives from CME Associates toured the site, um, took a couple of, noted a couple of areas that, uh, that needed to be addressed specifically. Um, one of the things that's a little bit different on the plan here than, than what was presented last month, on the eastern part of the site, uh, there is the intention to keep the concrete trucks separate from, uh, the other traffic on the property. So you can see that dedicated road to the, I'm just going to point it out, which is right here. And that, that's a dedicated road just for the concrete trucks. So the, the intention of that is to keep any kind of concrete truck traffic away from the, uh, garages and storage building. There are several businesses in there, uh, people use it for storage, uh, and there's a, a car repair facility, a couple of other smaller businesses, in order to keep those segregated and to avoid any kind of conflicts of traffic that was being developed. Uh, one of the other things, uh, that we're showing on the plans is, uh, the drainage system has been slightly increased. Uh, we've incorporated, uh, the runoff, uh, from the eastern slopes into the eastern drainage system. Previously, a lot of it was kind of just, um, uh, flowing, cheap flowing to the west across the driveway. Uh, it was, uh, especially in the, in the winter weather, as the weather got colder, we found that, uh, that could be problematic at times when you have these intermittent, um, periods of melting and, uh, and freezing and melting and freezing. Uh, so in order to help alleviate that issue, uh, that, that water that might be associated coming off that bank there, uh, is going to be, um, conveyed to the stormwater basin as well. So, um, as late as five thirty today, I was still, uh, conversing with CME Associates. Um, one of the things that we want, as, as a result of incorporating this additional drainage into the basin, the emergency spillway, um, functions, uh, for a one hundred year storm, uh, and results in a slight increase in drainage. So, um, one of the things that CME is, is requesting, hopefully as a condition of approval on your part, that would slightly enlarge the basin, uh, in order to accommodate for that, that really will not take too much more adjustment in order to that. I mean, we're talking less than one CFS increase for a one hundred year storm. So it's, it's relatively minor in the big scheme of things here. Secondly, uh, the, uh, one of the things with the, uh, the MS four requirements for the town in order to, to verify that we're not illicitly discharging, um, anything but stormwater and groundwater on the site, uh, we have to, we have to certify to that, uh, to this commission, to the, to the town of Plainfield. Uh, so, um, I've got a letter, uh, actually addressed to Mr. Brayden, uh, on behalf of Plainfield Garages and Storage LLC. This letter is prepared to certify that Killingley Engineering Associates is not aware of any illicit discharge from the subject property. In accordance with Connecticut D E P General Permit for Discharge of Stormwater from Small Municipal Separate Stormwater Systems, illicit discharge means any unpermitted discharge to waters of the state that does not consist entirely of stormwater or uncontaminated groundwater. So in other words, if they had, um, floor drains or, um, if there was, uh, you know, some sort of outdoor activities where they were maintaining vehicles and things of that nature, uh, those would actually be considered an illicit discharge, and those types of activities aren't happening on this site. Uh, so the discharge is on this site consists entirely of uncontaminated groundwater or treated stormwater. So I'd like to hand that in for the record. And finally, uh, CME Associates, uh, with the, with the final plans, the final of plans, when they are completed, uh, Dave, we would want to provide a stamped and signed plans and calculations, uh, for the record, uh, for the town of Plainfield, which, uh, I think is rather customary. We do that pretty much every time.
Okay, thank you. This is a public hearing, so if there's anyone in the audience who has a comment or question regarding this application, step up to the microphone, state your name and your comment or question.
Hello, my name is Mark Maydow, where is Chapel Hill Road, San Village. Okay, um, I was one that brought up about the water, and I'm pleased that you follow through and put some, some, uh, to my problem. So thank you very much for that. Um, big problem on that one was my mother has three houses down, and it's a property that I may end up getting eventually, you know? So if you have, uh, I have capacity, I'm interested in protecting that property.
Of course.
So, second, illicit discharge. So now we're back to the cleaning out of the trucks.
And I, I have that on the plans and I forgot to discuss that.
If you want to, please do, because then we may be, um, my name is.
Sure. So, um, in this area here, uh, next to the proposed, uh, the gravel storage bins, uh, we are, we have, um, shown the construction of a, of a concrete washout area. And what this is, it's a, um, it's a kind of crushed surface that the, that the trucks packed up on. Uh, there's a, it's a three foot deep depression, uh, on the backside of it. Everything is sloped back toward that depression. And, uh, as the trucks toward the end of the day, when they wash off, they pull off, they pull up on the stone, uh, they wash the trucks off and, and the water, um, and any kind of sediment associated with the concrete, uh, sedimentous spaces. Uh, we actually have a, an installation instruction, but we have maintenance, uh, requirements on it as well. So, and, you know, as it fills, obviously fulfills with water, um, it has to be pumped out, disposed of accordingly. Um, once the, uh, the bottom of the basin collects enough, uh, concrete and that is enough water functioning, that's going to be cleaned out as well. It's going to be disposed.
So is everything followed? Would it be, would you use some water protection?
Absolutely. Yep, yep. This, uh, this particular detail is, is specifically addressed by Connecticut.
Madam Chairman, division numbers.
Are you in favor of this applicant team, the nineteen sixteen sixty-six and sixteen eighty-one? Probably won't be able to pull it here in the sixteen eighty-one, so I wanted to add that.
Could you just state your name again? State your name for the record.
Charlie Course, two nine five, state metal. First thing I'd like to say is that the applicant has been a very successful businessman. They did around twenty. Uh, he has completed many successful projects. Additionally, he supplied a tremendous amount of housing for residents and non-residents alike. The second thing that I think is very important is the economic part of this project. The project will probably, I'm estimating, probably add two to four million dollars to taxes, I'm flinching. Now, that certainly would help. I think my taxes are a little lower, so I'm very much in favor of that. Finally, the, the project is situated, I think, in a very ideal place, in such that we have a major highway running, uh, north and south to three fifty-two. We have fourteen A running east and west. We have Route twelve running north and south. These roads are all state maintained, are not going to cost the town any money. And with a project like this, he is situated in an area that's close to all of these, which means that in effect that truck traffic will not bother too many people. And I know that that's always a concern of everyone, uh, of it, and I think it's, it's an ideal location. So I would urge the members, commission members, to vote in favor of these two projects. Thank you, Madam Chairman.
Thank you. Public hearing is still open for any other comments?
Good evening, I'm Madam Chairman and members of the board. I spoke in December in favor of the application.
Your name?
And, uh, my name is Paul Sweet, two sixty new road. I'm sorry if I get that down by now. Anyway, bottom line is I still support the application.
Thank you. Anyone else from the audience?
Jamie Clark, one oh seven Plainfield Pike. Um, I'm like right in the middle of it. Plainfield Terrace is over here, and there's some med plants over here. I have no problems with it. It's, I have no concerns. They're very polite, the truck drivers, I can, it's a great, I'm in favor for this.
John Von Deck, one fourteen Plainfield Pike. I live right across the street. I've been there for fifteen years, and I have no problem with anything that to do with any of the site. I support it.
Thank you.
Um, our chat, one question I have. Sir, can we just get your address, please? Uh, one by four Dow Road. I'd love to know about all these locations. Is the rock crushing going to cause, and then exactly what you're talking about?
Well, the, the rock crushing is not the, is not the subject of this particular.
Well, any ones are, it's both, you're right, both. That will be coming up down there. Um, there's a kind of a semi plant industrial part that they were making noise, and when that was running, it was on burn. So I think I might think about noise and have that checked out. Thank you very much.
Anyone else from the audience comment or question on this application? Any comments or questions from staff?
I have one more, I have one more thing.
Sure.
With regard, this particular, this particular operation, uh, regarding noise, uh, the batch plant itself is, is indoors. This is a, this is a covered facility. So, um, you know, I would submit for the record that the truck traffic on, on group fourteen A is, is probably going to be much more problematic than, uh, what happens in the concrete plant, which is much further removed from the original design basis.
Thank you. Any other comments from the audience? Any comments from staff?
All my comments have been answered, so we're all set. I do have petition for approval for deliberation during the regular meeting.
Any comments or questions from board members? Okay, hearing done. I'll entertain a motion on the public hearing.
One second.
So I have a motion to close by John, um, second by Roz. All those in favor of closing the public hearings? Aye. Any opposed? Okay, public hearing is closed. Moving on to item C, C two thousand and nineteen, one six seven zero of CME Inc., requesting a special permit for earth products excavation and processing on property located on Millbrook Road, Plainfield, MAP ten, block seventeen, lot five, industrial one zoning district.
Good evening, for the record, John Feliciane, Vaniers LLC, also the design engineer, David Kay is with me as well, as the applicant, CME, is also here. Um, the plans that I'm going to distribute to you are the same plans that are filed with the application, um, but I tore up your new set so that you could each have something in your hand to look at. Before we get to the plans, just do a little bit of housekeeping. This is the first time in the hearing, this application since the beginning opening of the public hearing. So you do have in your record, um, the certified mail notice receipts that were sent. I also have the green cards that have been returned to us. We have those, uh, and those receipts were submitted back in the, uh, the thirtieth of December with revised plan sets. So before we get into the plans again, I'm just going to kind of review where we are because this is the opening of the hearing. This application was initially received by the wetlands commission on November nineteenth and forwarded to CME Associates for their review, but they put, um, the application was received by the planning and zoning commission on Jan., uh, December tenth, in schedule for hearing this evening. The, um, initial review comments were received by the applicant from town staff on December sixteenth, um, and presentation was made to the wetlands commission on seventeenth of December, at which time the wetlands commission approved the application based on the plan that we have in front of you. We received additional review comments from CME Associates on the eighteenth of December and from town staff on the thirtieth. As I stated earlier, the notices were sent in accordance with section sixteen twenty-five point three on December twenty-third, um, to meet the requirements for the ten day minimum period. Uh, revised plan and comment responses were provided to town staff and CME Associates on December twenty-sixth, December thirtieth, and we had received, uh, approval from the town planner, um, after meeting on January second, that town staff comments had been satisfied. Uh, we also received just the other day, uh, dated January thirteenth from CME Associates, that all comments that had, that they had 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 been addressed on the revised plans that they have in front of you. Uh, you know, multiplying in accordance with the requirements of section twelve point three, two point eight, we've also requested a waiver of section twelve point three, two point four, point B, point one six with this application. Um, I will go over that briefly, but as we go through the plan set, I will identify the justification, uh, for that waiver request. The waiver request is specific to the requirement for installing monitoring wells in accordance with standard well drillers practices and, uh, creating groundwater contours for the site operations plan. We have actually installed four monitoring wells on the site. We've been monitoring groundwater for the last four months, and we have established, uh, based on that, that information, along with the associated wetlands, um, on three sides of the property, we have associated, but we have determined the groundwater table. I'll demonstrate that in the plan set as I move forward. You do have that waiver request in your packet when you do have a copy here, if you want me to shortly. In addition to that, again, as a matter of housekeeping, um, a bond estimate was submitted for the project, which includes each of the four phases and erosion sedification controls. This was reviewed and found to be accurate by your town engineer in that consulting And while we're reading submissions, again, this is in your record already, but this is the illicit discharge compliance statement dated December thirtieth. Um, as Tebo pointed out in prior application, this is required, uh, for this type of activity. The property is located, uh, I'm going to speak loudly away from here, if that's okay. The property is located on the north side of Millbrook Road to the west of the railroad tracks adjacent to the Plainfield Renewable Energy Facility. Uh, the locus is shown on sheet one of the plan set. Sheet two of the plan set is the existing condition survey, which is a boundary survey of the area that we're going to be working, along with the weapon delineation required municipal setbacks for the weapon regulated areas, for equipment setbacks for the operations equipment during the excavation, as well as a fifty-foot excavation setback, which is identified from property lines adjacent to the area that we're going to be working. Sheet three is where we're going to spend most of our time. The proposed excavation takes place over approximately seventeen point six acres of a fifty-six acre site. The excavation is proposed in the easterly portion of that site, again, adjacent to the railway and, um, just to the west of the Plainfield Renewable Energy Facility. The access to the site is from Millbrook Road over an existing paved driveway in this area. That paved driveway is twenty-six feet wide and is approximately six hundred and forty feet long to where it terminates in an area of historic excavation, uh, at the very front part of the site, which will be part of our phase one excavation. We've identified excavation phases in a clockwise manner from phase one, two, three, and then four adjacent to the railroad. The total lining material to be excavated throughout the project is five hundred and thirty thousand cubic yards. That will be done in four phases, each less than five acres. First phase will be a hundred and eleven thousand square, uh, cubic yards. Phase two is about a hundred and eighty thousand cubic yards. Phase three is approximately ninety-five thousand cubic yards, and finally, phase four is a hundred and forty-five thousand cubic yards. And again, that will be done in the four phases that are identified on the sheet that outlined in green. In terms of the operations, at the entrance, we propose an anti-trap pattern, uh, spaces for up to ten employee parking strip cars, a temporary scale, and a temporary processing area. Each of the phases also includes the appropriate sediment traps identified in the southwestern part of phase one, again, southwestern part of phase two. There are two proposed sediment traps in the northern part of phase three, and one of those will be future, in the future converted to a permanent trap, uh, permanent basin once the excavation is completed. And then finally, the fourth sediment trap in the southeast corner of phase four. To the actual phasing of the site, or phasing the areas. Sheet four is the first part of phase one, which identifies the entrance location and proposed sediment traps in greater detail, along with those features that I just mentioned. In terms of parking, it also includes a concrete fueling pad and a lay down area or processing area adjacent to that entrance. Sheet five, we show parts of the initial part of phase one, and then we expand into the other phases of the site. All of the slopes, uh, on the perimeter of the site are designed to be at three to one, uh, upon completion. We've established the floor of the excavation that maintains, I'm just going to go back to sheet three. We designed the floor of the excavation to maintain existing hydrology. There's a ridge in approximately the north, the north clear part of the property that runs east and west in this area. So we have designed the floor of the elevation, the floor of the excavation to maintain those same drainage patterns. The floor from that point to the south is at half a percent back towards that separate sediment trap of phase one, and from that point to the north is approximately two percent back to the toe of the proposed rail and burn of the area. So as I mentioned earlier, we have three to one slopes that rock the whole site. There is a burn that will be maintained, um, between the excavated area and the unexcavated portions of the site. That burn ranges in approximately twenty feet high on the westward edge to approximately ten feet on the northwestly portion, and then it drops down to a grade or just about a couple of feet on the northern portion near sediment trap three bed. That three to one slope is also maintaining the burn as well along the easterly boundary line adjacent to the rail bed to maintain the fifty-foot sediment. boundary line adjacent to the rail bed to maintain a fifty-foot separation distance of the burn from the property line. As I mentioned, the floor of the pit is sloped in those two directions. Um, the height point of the floor of that pit is at elevation one sixty-two approximately, and then it comes back down where at elevation one sixty in this area, um, which is fairly consistent down as you come into the existing entrance drive, um, where the anti-tracking pad is proposed to be installed. In terms of the groundwater, uh, you'll see in the top left corner of sheet three is a groundwater monitoring table. We've installed those four wells I had mentioned. They are, um, located in the southwestern portion of phase one, the mid-northerly section of phase two, the southerly section of phase three, um, and then again, right in the center of the middle of the site, essentially at the middle of the site. Those monitoring walls are installed at depths that exceed our excavation in most cases, and the one well that I'll draw your attention to is that pit four. That's the one that's located directly adjacent to the entrance at phase one. That area, as I mentioned before, that previously estimated, the ground elevation, existing ground elevation in that area is one fifty-eight point seven. We've been able to maintain the water, um, monitoring throughout the winter months, and we have established that that water filter, quarter elevation, is at approximately elevation one forty-five to one forty-six, and it's maintained that consistently. That elevation is consistent with the elevations of the wetlands located to the north of the site and to the south of the excavation area. Um, and so we have demonstration, I'll show you some cross-sections on the, on the sheet, which identify that water table actually falls. If you look at sheet five of the plan set, there's cross-sections that are identified. Section A runs north and south essentially through the mid part of the excavation. Section B runs east and west, and then section C is slightly off the pages on the other sheet, and that's up in phase two and three of the excavation. When we look at the section details, beginning on page seven with section A that I had mentioned runs north to south, you'll see the existing grave, which is this irregular line at the top of the page. Keep in mind, this is an exaggerated scale. Um, you have the floor elevation of the proposed excavation here with the slight burn near the temporary center basin in phase one on the left-hand side of the page, and then a little bit of sharper burn as we get down near the area that I mentioned that temporary center basin three A is located. That's the area that a little bit short of burn. Um, this is the area that we're looking at, elevation of the floor approximately one sixty-two, back down to about one sixty near the entrance. And based on the groundwater monitoring that we have conducted and the limits of the elevation, uh, the limits of the wetlands, um, we've established that groundwater to be down here at about elevation one forty-five, one forty-six, and again, our floor is up in the one sixty to one sixty-two range. So we're maintaining approximately fifteen, ten feet from the bottom of our excavation to the water table. Um, that's intentionally done so that we render the site useful as a fu- for future reuse for manufacturing opportunities that may arise, the property is a zone in I-one, and we don't want to preclude, um, our ability to do that in the future. Section B that I mentioned runs east and west, and again, you can see the deeper burns on both sides of that. We're in areas of, uh, deeper cuts as we get to that fifty-foot excavation setback in the property line. And again, the water table has been established based on our monitoring, installation of those wells is shown in this section as well, and it's down here again, approximately elevation one forty-five, one forty-six. So that fifteen-foot separation is maintained throughout. And then finally, section C, which demonstrates the same information essentially on both the left and right-hand side of that page, you see the elevation of the limits of the wetlands at elevation approximately one forty-five, one forty-six, consistent with the water table that we observed, and again, the floor of our excavation, um, well above that approximately by two feet. The remainder of the sheet sets, uh, include construction details for the burn for erosion control measures, for the trap found by our side, for our concrete fueling pad, um, K-L check dams, all of those details are found in sheet ten, along with the project narrative, instruction sequence, and operation maintenance of the rolling controls. Um, the narrative discusses the excavation in the four phases that we've talked about. It also refers to the equipment that was used on site. That's identified in, um, the third paragraph in the bottom. Um, we will be utilizing a portable screen, a portable crusher, front-end loaders, excavators, uh, and, and triax and dump trucks throughout the operation. Um, we have also identified that, that those pieces of equipment will not be stored within the hundred-foot setback that's identified in earlier sheets, uh, in accordance with your regulations. The maintenance, operation maintenance, erosion control is shown on this sheet as well. The six or seven paragraph down is probably the paragraph that's of most of our review. It requires that the erosion control measures be inspected every seven days during the operations, or within twenty-four hours of a storm event that creates a discharge from either of the center basins during the operation, um, and that those inspections are continued for three consecutive months, once the site has been reclaimed and won't conceded to ensure that there's no additional erosion after that. Again, sheet eleven is more construction details, and it's a version of the temporary center basins to permanent stonework basins, or basins of, uh, three A, as I had mentioned earlier. And then lastly, sheet twelve includes the truck routing plant. This is the bulk of the entirety of the site, again, the railroad to the adjacent, uh, east side. The truck routing will use the existing access drivers, which are located around the corner of the site, and follow Millbrook Road. Our sheet twelve, Millbrook Road obviously was, was designed as an industrial road to handle the appropriate, uh, level traffic that are proposed, uh, for this as well as the future commercial or industrial development along Millbrook Road. With that, I will, um, ask the commissioner if you have any questions. I know I kind of briefed this very briefly. Uh, all of the information that you're reviewing now, as well as the documentation supporting stonework compilations and sizing of center basins has been reviewed by the county consulting engineer, uh, as I had mentioned, received dated January thirteenth. Their correspondence, that all their conditions or concerns have been addressed.
So this is a public hearing. If there's anyone in the audience with a comment or question regarding this application, please step up to the microphone with your name and your comment.
Good evening again, Madam Chair, call suite two sixty new road. I support the application and present it. Thank you.
Anyone else from the audience, a comment or a question? Okay, any comments from the staff?
Uh, all my comments have been addressed. I do have one question though. Um, the important material that you have, is that something to make mark of the product using what you already have there in case you need to mix something with it?
It would be, it would be to supplement the materials that we have on site. It may also be from adjacent sites or sites within the area. Um, like I had mentioned, we will have a portable scale, uh, portable crusher and screening plant here, processing plant, and so the ability to bring material in if it becomes necessary, um, is something that we wanted to include in the application. It is allowed in the I-one zone, and, um, and therefore we didn't want to take that opportunity away or have to be in a position that we'd have to come back and ask for something later.
Any comments from board members?
Hours of operation.
With hours of...
Hours of operation, I identify, um, on sheet ten, any narrative in there consistent with your regulations, seven to seven, Monday through Saturday. No holidays, no Sundays. It's included on the narrative, which is on sheet ten. Pretty much breaks that, the little hours of operation limited to seven to seven, Monday through Friday, seven to seven on Saturday, no operations take place on Sundays, only law. That's consistent with your regulations.
Any other comments, questions from the board? Okay, hearing no other comments or questions, I'll entertain a motion on the public hearing. Motion to close by Sean. Second by John. All those in favor of closing the public hearing, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Okay, public hearing is closed. Moving on to item D. D two thousand nineteen, one six seven three, Benjamin and Kelly Verdic, requesting a special permit for an accessory apartment on property located at sixteen Main Street, Central Village, map one CB, block eighty-five, lot thirty-three, C-two zoning district.
Good evening, my name is Ben Verdic. Uh, normally, it's two seventeen, one of the kills in the past twenty years, which we just sold. Uh, three years ago, my wife and I purchased the old Martell woodworking building, and I run my own oil and sales business out of it. And my plan was to, uh, as our kids have left the house, we are not in need of a house we were heading, so we just wanted to downsize, build a smaller, uh, two-bedroom, moving that concept type of apartment, on the second floor. Don't be any changes to the outside of this, outside of the building, besides, uh, new more energy efficient windows and a portrait. Other than that, it's already hooked up to, uh, city sewer, and, uh, I'm not sure what other. I've submitted, uh, all the plans to Ryan, sent out all money, sent out a lot of, uh, notifications, called and returned, and returned, uh, last one. If there's any questions you guys have for the man.
Ryan, did you review the floor plan of the apartment?
I did, with the compliance regulations.
Okay. And is there anyone in the audience, this is a public hearing, so if you have a comment or question on this application, you know the, the rules, right?
Madam Chair, call suite two sixty new road. I support the application and present it.
Thank you. Anyone else with a comment or question on this application? Board members, comments or questions on this application? Okay, hearing, hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing. Uh, motion by Roz.
Second.
Second by Sean. All those in favor of closing the public hearing?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, see you in a little bit. Uh, moving on to item E. Z two thousand nineteen, one six seven four, Whitney Easton, requesting a special permit for an accessory apartment on corporate property located at one three five School Street, Central Village, map one CB, block eighty-six, lot twenty-one, C-two zoning district.
Hello, I'm Whitney Easton, uh, at the middle of the main street. Um, I'm just coming here in Florida tonight to, uh, request the permit for, uh, an accessory apartment for a commercial space that used to be in the building. Um, I've owned the building now for about three and a half, almost four years. Um, I've been trying to rent out the commercial spaces. Uh, the building is right there, we're twelve and fourteen, split in Central Village across from Gando's Pub. Um, and I had a really hard time renting out the, um, commercial space. Tried for a few years, I had somebody at first who wanted to do a bakery in there, and I had to sell the car, she couldn't get any funding. Um, and one of the problems people had was, um, with that main street right there going so fast and they'll, um, fix the park directly in front of the, uh, building. People didn't think that customers would want to drive around back to where the parking is. Um, so I requested about six months ago in July to convert it to an accessory apartment. Uh, and that was approved by the, I'm still not sure exactly how the process works, but that was approved by, uh, another board in July. Um, and so I came to get the building permit to start work on it, um, and so now I'm applying for this, uh, permit for the zoning department. Um, and so, uh, yeah, I, I had a hard time, um, renting it, so I decided that the best use for it would be to have an accessory apartment. Um, it's gonna be probably a one-bedroom, um, or two-bedroom, sorry, apartment. Not very big, it's just basically what's left of, um, of the, of the building, what hasn't been rented out, just three other apartments in the building. And I have a floor plan here.
Yes, if you have any suggestions.
This is, um...
You can just speak.
Sorry, actually, I want to give the rest one to the rest of you. So, um, yeah, so this, um, well, basically, there's three other apartments in the building, uh, and this would just be the, uh, the last, uh, the former commercial space. Uh, but prior to that, I don't think it's been successfully rented out for a few decades now. It was, a woman had a, uh, the woman who owned it had a junk shop in there, uh, so she didn't really have to, she owned the building, so she didn't have to make much money off of it, so, um, it's never been rented, it hasn't been rented to a tenant in a long time, so that's why I thought that the apartment would be the best use for the space.
Can you tell me where the street is?
Sure.
Oh, right there.
And you mentioned the, and you mentioned the parking is behind the building?
Yeah, behind the building, so, um, and that was one of the problems, I think, that people who wanted to rent the commercial space had was, um, you have to go to Water Street, take a left, go down, uh, and then Arneo's, by Arneo's, um, uh, welding, there's an entrance that's a right-of-way to the building. So for a tenant, that's fine, you just have to tell them that, but for customers, it was kind of hard to explain to each customer how to, you know, get around back to park. Um, and then there's also a lot that came with the building that was needed with the building, um, that's on this map here, I'll show, I'll give it to you as well. Um, this is the actual parking behind the building here, um, this area, and then this is the lot that came needed with the building, uh, that's also...
So how many parking spots are behind?
Uh, right now, there's, uh, six, uh, parking, uh, sorry, parking spaces behind the building. Um, and then this, uh, it's, I never let them tell me how many here, there's only ever one car there, but there could probably be four or five parking spaces there, it has by.
So there's possibility of ten parking spots total?
Yeah, that's, um, and, well, I, um, I spoke with somebody at, um, oh, so this is, sorry, this is the, uh, at twenty-three is the lot that came in, um, and twenty-one is my building, and that's, uh, so it's on the deal with the building.
So you said it's lot twenty-three, is it, is it a parking area?
Yeah, yep, and that already has a curb cutout, uh, for it. Um, and it's, it's, uh, got the, uh, metal barriers that kind of go around it, and there's a curb cutout. Uh, I think the city wants to put those curb, those metal barriers in.
And this is a public hearing, so if there's anyone in the audience with a comment or question for the applicant on this application? Okay, were there any additional comments from staff?
Well, I was ready a parking plan for this, I feel much more comfortable if you do get a plan. I know you contracted close to a barrel.
Yeah, I, sorry, I spoke with them, and so the, he gave me some advice. He said, um, you know, he was like, I could write out, I could do a, a plan for you, he said, uh, but if you're going in front of the board, he says, the, the space that you had for commercial was twelve hundred square feet, and said that, that required a total of twelve spaces for the three units and then the, the commercial. Uh, he said, right now, if you convert it to apartment, it would only require eight spaces, so he said, even if, you know, the, uh, I could draw up an expensive parking plan for you, he said, but if you wanted to see, if you want to go in front of the board, tell them that, um, now there's four less spaces required for the building, so I, he thought that that might be something that was, um...
Well, not, not really, because it's illegally non-conforming building starts parking, it's then a common, I mean, street park.
Okay.
Um, so I, I do need to see a little bit of a parking plan and make sure we get the spaces.
Okay.
I don't know, I haven't ever seen a lot twenty-three year old data, so I don't know what it can accommodate, so...
Okay.
Um, but we can work together to, uh, to come up with something.
Okay. All right, yeah, yeah, when he gave me that, uh, advice, I, I wasn't really sure, uh, about how to, uh, prevent that, that he said, um, it would be less, 'cause I don't know that much about the zoning laws, but he said, I guess because it was, it's gonna be less than, it'll be less non-conformal than it was, he thought that that would be...
Well, Arneo parks across the street, you know, lots of parking, so, but you obviously can't put residential vehicles there.
Yeah.
So parking the night and stuff.
Yeah.
So, I, I'll, I'll work with you.
Okay. Great, thank you.
Uh, it's a question from board members? So Ryan is suggesting that this be continued to review the parking?
This will allow for the accession view as well, there's a lot of parking over there.
Uh, it will not, um...
It will not, however, the CBA did grant a variance for this one. So it's basically compliance and regulations now, providing the parking space is...
It's up to the board. If the board wants to take the applicant's statement of parking, then it could be closed. If they want to wait for staff to review the parking to determine that it meets the number, then it would have to be continued to February.
We are strictly in the back of the building currently.
Correct, six parking spots behind the building.
I have a picture, I was trying to print it out, I couldn't get my printer to print it very well, but I have a printer of how the parking is laid out, and that's just something about, so there's one, two, three, four, five, six right there, and there's actually more space, but, so it's, they're kind of parked at...
So it's not lined, so...
Yes, and that light's, yeah, it's, I'm just, and it's sort of waiting on this to be the final, once that this last space is finished, I can re-mortgage it, fill it a little bit of money out, and that must have paid both of those parking lots.
Given the fact that it's been entered for so long, it seems like a conversation with Ryan will resolve this to everybody's satisfaction. I take a motion, we continue it, so you can talk with Ryan and come up with a good parking plan. I think that would, that would be reasonable.
Okay, so we have a motion by John to continue it to February, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second by Jared, all those in favor of continuing, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, public hearings continue to February to finalize the parking.
Sorry, does that mean the second part of this, when I put it up again, will that, do I still do that, or?
You just have to talk about parking the next time you come up.
I mean, then, then the next part of this, you're also, almost, the debate started, I'll make sure.
No, no, all we'll say is it was continued.
Okay, all right, thank you.
You're welcome. All right, and item F. D 2019 1681 of Plainfield Materials LLC requesting a special permit for gravel screening, processing, and crushing on property located at 113 Plainfield Pike Plainfield, MAP 17, block 36, lot 68 and 68A, industrial water zoning district.
Good evening, men, for the record, Mr. McCoy represents the applicant and address to offer to share the services in order to clarify what is going on. This application is essentially a request to revise existing special permit with its issued in September of 2018 for screening on this site of her property internal. At that time, and in a minute's reflectus, there was a representation made by the, at that time, that crushing would not be required at the site upon operations over a period of time. The applicant has determined that in order to create the appropriate amount of aggregate that they need to get on the site, that in addition to screening and other processes, crushing will be necessary to be, to be done on the site, so we're back before you to in effect revise the permit for that purpose. Norm Tivo, Killianly Engineering is here to talk about what I think is probably going to be one of the questions that are going to be in front of you with respect to noise, and Norm, if you could, first of all, give them the notices that you have.
I do have a copy of notices, they were actually scanned and emailed to Ryan, and I have not been in town to give them to him, so we can be sent copies. For the record, Norm Tivo, Killianly Engineering Associates, as Mr. McCoy has stated, this, this application is essentially a modification of the existing application. This was approved back in September of 2018 by this commission for screening and processing. The operation has been in effect since September of 2018. The improvements that were requiring part of the application with the stormwater controls and the landscaping and screening and so forth have been essentially installed at this time. And in addition to the screening and processing, we are here now to request the crushing, as Mr. McCoy has indicated to you. What, you know, what, what they're finding, what the operators are finding, that a lot of material that they come across, because they do projects in other areas and so forth, and there's, there's a substantial amount of rock that they encounter that needs to be processed, which merely screening doesn't, doesn't handle, so they're looking to do the crushing on this site. Now, they had a crushing machine set up, and they weren't operating, and it brought to their attention that they were not permitted to that. There was a misunderstanding about that, they immediately stopped when they were told that they could not do that anymore, so we're back here before you. The only time since their stopping of all activities for crushing, with that is actually run, was on January 3rd, where they informed town staff that they would be, were going to crush it for about an hour, so that we could take some sound level readings to see if we could meet the requirements in accordance of the state statute. Now, sound levels are governed by the Connecticut DEP, specifically Title 22A, Part 69, Control of Noise. If, many municipalities have their own noise ordinance put into place, but the town of Plainfield does not, so in this particular instance, since we do not have a sound ordinance, we refer to that to Section 22A. So the, since this is an industrial zone... The, the rock crushing operation in an industrial zone, it is known as a, as a Class C emitter, and a Class C is for an industrial property. So, for a Class C emitter, essentially, at the property line of this, of this type of use, the decimal levels are not to exceed 70 decimals. That's, well, that is if the abutting property is also industrial, it's own property, which it is, as, as you have different uses, if, if the abutting property, for instance, was a residential property, you have to go down to 61 decimals at the property line during the day, 51 at night. So, what we did is, we had the machine run for approximately 45 minutes on January 3rd. The weather that day was rather cool, it was about 39, 39, 40 degrees, and very clear and crisp, and I think that's important, because typically, the sound levels do travel a little, a little bit further, and they emanate a little bit louder when you've got dry conditions. If you've got hot humid conditions, these, these levels are typically depressed a little bit, so I feel as though we took these, these sound level readings at, at the optimum time in order to find out what we're really dealing with here. I'm gonna, I'm gonna grab this microphone, because as I'm looking at my chart here, the, what I have is a common decimal level chart here, and the darkest blue on the bottom, 40 decimals, is a rate drop or a wire room. Typical conversation, if we're, if I were standing here talking to you without a microphone, was anywhere from the 60 to 65 decibel level. And then we've got things like a lawn clock at 75, highway traffic set on 85, lawnmower or air dryer 90, rock concert at 105, a chainsaw or airport 110. I found this kind of interesting, that at 115 decimals is an iPod playing a peepine or baby crying, which is also a discomfort level, when you, when you start talking about pressure. Jackhammer is about 120, or a car horn about three feet away from you, and then things like fireworks, a gunshot, a plane takeoff, and those approach like the 140 decibel level. What we, we took a lot, a lot of readings, starting right at the crusher, all the way to this property line. At the crusher itself, we were about 95 decibels, 25 feet further, 93, 91, and 88 at the property line with plainfield, plainfield garages and storage. As we proceeded to the north, we had about 89 at the bins, where, where the crush zone falls into, 87 a little further, and at the scale around 82. As you proceed down the driveway, as you turn into the site, we were 76. At the gate to the, to the facility, we were at 71. At the road, it's 72 with the, with the background noise, but every time a truck went by or a car went by, it spiked up to about 88. And then at the property line, which I think were the important spots, we had two readings at the property line of 66 decibels. And we are, by, by the statute, we are not supposed to exceed that, that 70 decimal level during the day, and it actually drops at night, and it actually goes down to, at nighttime, 66, so even though we meet the nighttime criteria, there's not going to be any kind of crushing or processing and none, so we'll, we'll follow up with that. I think the bottom line is, the, the actual sound levels at the road are higher than at the property line. Kind of has to do with the fact that, that the terrain drops off a little bit over here, and then you've got some, some berms, some stockpiles here that kind of gadget the sound a little bit, but as you get to the road, you've got this, this kind of this open shot, you know, that comes right down the driveway, there's a lot of hard surface over here, and it, it really sort of reflects the sound a little bit better, so that you...
Could you just submit a copy of that report for the record?
I get it, yes.
Can I get a copy of that too? I live right across the street.
Sure, you can get a copy tomorrow. Yeah.
You can get a copy from the town hall.
Yeah, absolutely.
That's why I was making sure it was part of the record.
Yeah, so, essentially, you know, sound interference or damaging sounds are measured by two things, obviously, there's, there's decimal level, so is the duration of sound too. So, if levels emitted in excess of values of, basically, in the noise-induced hearing damages related to the duration value of exposure, research suggests that safe exposure limit is 85 decibels for 80, for eight hours a day. Anything above that, you really shouldn't, any longer duration, or any louder decimal levels, which, which occur at the crusher itself, there should be, hearing protection should be provided at that point.
So this is a public hearing, so if there's anyone in the audience with a comment or question, if you could come up to the microphone, your name and address.
I'm at lots of 126 Plainfield Pike, right across the street. Question one, water problem. You're watching the trucks right now, right here, where's that water going? In regards to, there's wetlands right through here, right across the street.
There's a, there's a stormwater basin in front of the site, the water actually runs down basically over here. But nothing runs in that direction.
I'll also just note for the record that this site plan has already been approved, so what tonight's application is, is a modification to add the stone crushing, so the other site plan issues of water drainage and such have already been approved and submitted, submitted and approved. So this application is specifically to add the purpose of stone crushing, so that has to be, comments have to be limited to the application.
Okay, it goes back to also September 18th?
Correct.
There was also a meeting, I was never notified of that meeting back in 2018, for screening?
So Ryan would have the record of the application, so if you have a concern about what was done in previous application, you can go to the town hall and request copies of the record for that.
What are the hours of operation for crushing?
They'll be from 9 to 5 during weekdays, and 8 to noon on Saturdays, no crushing on Sundays or holidays.
I believe it's at 7 to 5?
7 to 5, I have my...
Well, and that was gonna be one of my questions.
Sure.
So, the September 2018 application, the proposed hours were Monday to Friday, 7 to 5, Saturday 8 to 1. My question was if the stone crushing would be restricted to smaller operation hours?
I certainly think that if the commission has it with a new jurisdiction, if they felt as though that was necessary, I guess, absolutely.
Yeah, and, so that's clear again, Bill McCoy, we're not looking to extend the hours of operation for this permit at all, however, you do have the ability, as, as Norm indicated, to restrict more, strictly, the stone crushing itself.
Yes.
My last question is, noise and dust, I mean, you guys were up there to crush November 29th, and it was dust from 9 o'clock in the morning until 4:30 in the night. I mean, where's that dust going?
Well, there is, there is a well on site, and the, the crushing itself, I think, the actual, you know, crushing operation, the crushing machine does have the ability to add water to it, to limit the dust, and I believe that if there was dust generated, and obviously, you know, the intention of the applicant and the operators here are to be good neighbors, and they do their best to try and control the dust on the site. If there are situations where they are, they are generating some excessive dust, and the dust, and it's prohibiting activities by neighboring properties, or, or if it's being troublesome to some neighbors, I, you know, they should absolutely talk to the folks operating, or, or contact the town hall, they certainly have an intention to generate more dust, and it's absolutely necessary.
Was the water just being used, you know, around the...
Yes.
I, I honestly couldn't, couldn't say that it was the worst, it's...
No.
No.
Will it be in the future?
What's that?
Will it be in the future?
Yes, we just put a 7500 gallon tank in, and...
Could you just stand up and state your name for the record?
Hi, I'm Mr. Paul, the applicant. We just installed right on the backside of the drill to the well that we were talking about earlier, with a 7500 gallon holding tank. What the well's gonna do is, we anticipated using a couple thousand to 3,000 gallons a day to just mist, it's a trial and error, and it's only gonna be misting, just enough to keep the dust out, and the well at night will flush the tank, that's how it can go, double, and that, that's the design that we just did. And the only reason, this is, this whole thing's been a trial and error for a year. We learned that, which we have, you know, shown, which is all holders, all the property that we have. There actually has one. I like this one. So this was the reason for the screen change, this is all holders from the center. And it just become a nuisance to us, and we had to work, and this is, you know, when I say it, we had to break it down, and that's why the crushing. So, so we set up a plant that just does rock. We found out putting the gravel in created dust, that's where the hiccup was, and we shut right down, we had to find out that we're permitted, right? So we're still, from the moment of the now, we're having fun. So, now this plant is just designed for stone, which, when you're crushing stone, you have a, a green dust that falls, and with this setup that we just created, we should, should work and handle all of it.
Really sure.
So you had a lot of soap with the gravel, with that, soap with gravel?
Yeah, yeah, it was, it was a clay or a base, which we designed this yard to use what's there and bring in good gravel, so, but fortunately, you know, this, the whole thing with this is, being in the business for 35 years, every time I'm on, I have a bunch of rocks, what do I do, what do I do with these rocks? You know, I leave it for homeowners, and then pass it up to the neighbor, and when we're building a home, to build a lot of them homes. So I don't want to leave these, we bring them home, and all the contractors that I've worked for, and even being in the business just for the last six months, we probably had five other little companies say, hey, I got rocks, can you take them? So that was really the creation of this yard. And it's recyclable as well, but I think the water problem, I feel, is very, very good with Damick, I worked with them, the pump companies, it's a simple little setup, it's not gonna be no big drowning of the ground, it's been soaked back into the ground, so...
I, I did witness the dust, and it was very, it was bad.
But that's when we were trying the gravel and the clay, and it was just...
So you have dust control measures put in place, prepared for the new use?
I don't want to, if you approach stone piles...
I will add to that too, David, if we were out here to take the sound levels, they were... weren't even just rock, and there was virtually no dusting to it.
So this is the stone now, not being washed at all, and see how it's known there. So we changed the plan, just crushing the stone. And the screening, now there's going to be another plan that will work very excellent to just take care of the same, maximally the same way. So breaking them all down, it makes a lot of dust. So that's stone right there, that's just like a built-on stone, that's sharp, and the rocks are all prepared, and I would like to do some help here.
One more.
And we shut down, now that's for operation nine.
And then, did I also hear your crushing not only rocks on the property, but you're bringing in from other properties?
If there's a contractor that wants to bring this rock, he'll take it.
And what's the anticipated truckload increase with that new avenue?
That's twenty-two loads a week, maybe, if that happens. That's not much at all.
Can you just speak loudly, so the crowd can hear?
Yeah, one of the things that we're showing on the site plan, too, you can see the shaded garage, they are proposing also to put an addition on the existing scale house that they have, there's a scale house with a maintenance garage, so we're just going to put an addition onto that.
Is that part of this application?
Yes, it is, yes, it's shown on the page, yes.
This is public hearing, open for anyone with a comment or question on the sound application.
Yeah, my name is Paul Davershey. We own property at one fifty-four, one fifty-six, Plainfield Pike. This isn't quite what I expected. Comment that Plainfield materials is a damn noisy operation, but apparently that's already done deal. I would appreciate it if you don't let it get any noisier.
Thank you. Anyone else in the audience comment or question?
Paul Street, two sixty, New Road. It's obviously, it's obvious, the fact that the application, first application, I was here that evening when I presented it, and it wasn't the operation that has turned into in the past couple of years. So I'm in favor of the operation being enhanced by the crusher, but I'm still in favor of it being controlled as far as the hours of operation. And so I support the application this evening, the way it's been presented.
Thank you. Anyone else in the audience comment or question?
Yes, Dan Real, who's actually, it's actually a new piece of equipment that we've got for this. So it was, it came in, it came in, it's, according to the instructions, it's self-calibrating. We took it out of the box, we charged it up, we hit the calibration button on it, and it goes through a series of checks, and it calibrates itself.
So it's not calibrated against any other standard or any other instrument?
No, it's not.
Just, so the factory did it?
Yes.
And do you know what the tolerance is? Like, what percentage on the reading? Like, is it off, like, by one percent or two, or...
Honestly, I couldn't tell you.
Yeah, no, no, I'm asking, so I figured it'd be helpful because...
I don't know, I don't have that answer.
Right, but I'm just trying to be helpful, because I figured out, a lot of people say, well, noisy is relative, but I figured this might help to say, okay, we know it's within X percent noisy. I was just curious.
You can also get the same app on a smartphone.
Gentlemen, we're not going to have a conversation if you have your comments, you have to say it to the public. So if you have another comment...
All right, well, I'm against it, because it's noisy as all hell, but I mean, the meter that he has is the same as a smartphone. Apple has a nice free one, and you can calibrate it yourself, you can actually change the saturation level. So by changing the saturation level, you change the output.
I disagree with that, because I wouldn't have paid three hundred dollars for a meter if I should have gotten the same quality as my actual...
Just a point of past practice, Ryan. When we ask an applicant for a sound study, what are usually the parameters of that sound study?
I'm not sure you ever had one.
Set parameters or aspers?
Aspers, sound study, I don't recall. You may have a couple of those.
Any other comments or questions from the board?
I have a question. Ryan, can we ask for an independent study on noise sound, so? Can we get an independent study?
I guess, but I don't know who we hire for, I don't know if that's what we're here to do.
Well, this is the company, right? You're representing the company here?
I'm with, I'm with Killian Lee Engineering Associates, correct?
You're representing the company?
Yes.
I was just wondering if an independent study would settle? I have a lot of questions, and I'm not an engineer, and I'm not a noise specialist either, but, or noise specialist, I was just wondering if we could get...
Would we have CMA review the information that they submitted regarding the noise?
Did they review it? Did they review it?
Did CMA review what you submitted for the noise?
No, I don't, they did not, I don't think this application was submitted to CMA.
Again, to the record, Bill McQuaid, what Norm said, and I think it's important for the commission to understand, you do not, as a town, have any particular noise standards, so you default to the Connecticut DEEP standards, and that's where this data tracks back to. If the concern is that perhaps Mr. Debo fights the numbers, I suppose that's an interesting question, but I think at least for purposes of the record, he did what would be appropriate engineering practice to use equipment to measure those at the boundaries, and they're well within the state limits. This is not even a close call.
I don't think the question is that the numbers, well, I think it's just a matter of maybe an independent review of the data you obtain, might give us a little bit more confidence.
Thank you. Thank you. To make that to make very clean, more forceful.
Certainly, you have the ability to refer this matter to your consultant engineers. Mr. Air Quality, I think, does do some independent studies as well. My suggestion would be that you might want to refer to CMA to start with, just to see where they are with the data required, but that's certainly within discretion of this commission.
Also, if you get it, the whole, would you prefer to...
Mystic Sound, I'm sorry, Mystic Air Quality, they do, for example, studies with respect to asbestos issues of air quality, and...
And they do, they do...
But they do, but they actually do sound, sound studies as well.
Okay, so what I'm hearing from the commission members, and please correct me if I misunderstood, but what I'm hearing is that you would prefer to leave this public hearing open in order to give the opportunity for our engineer to review the sound information that they submitted? Is that the answer?
I think that would be the best plan.
Okay.
One, just maybe, sorry, maybe Air Quality gives some consideration to maybe different hours to operate the stone, hopefully, and so...
Sure, yeah, absolutely.
And then perhaps a more specific dust control plan to be presented. So with those outstanding items, I'll entertain a motion to continue the public hearing. I have a motion by Roz to continue to February. I have a second from John, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, public hearing is continued to February.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I will call the regular meeting to order. We do have an addition to the agenda under new business. All right, so to be added, item C, and what is the...
It is, C twenty, two thousand twenty seventeen oh one, outstanding for observation, processing removal at zero, number of roads, seven to ten, block seventeen, five.
And was that site plan review or a special?
This is site plan or a special.
Okay, thank you. So I'll entertain a motion to add that to the agenda. I have a motion from John, do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor of adding as item C and new business?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, adding. And that opens the floor to citizen participation, so this is opportunity to address the committee on anything that we haven't already addressed. All right, thank you, moving on to unfinished old business.
I was just trying to be polite, defer if anybody else wants to speak, but I did about two things. On one, and please don't construe this as being a comment on the project, I'm damn real twenty-two-year-old, the reason I asked about the noise thing is I was, you know, legitimately curious, because...
And you asked at the appropriate time, so...
Right, I don't know, but I'm, just some background, I'm Paul, and I used to work together, I used to be on the lab tech in a former life, and we would calibrate instrumentation, we have like a standard, so we'd know this meter was good, it was calibrated independently, and we would take readings with one meter and compare it to the stuff we were calibrating in-house, as it were. So we would know, like, okay, this thing is off within like one or two percent. So, I mean, just by reference, that's what I meant when I was talking about that. So the other item, I did come here originally to present was the litigation with the town against itself, just want to inform the board, I have filed a motion, and just so everything's not in the loop, I'd like you to take this correspondence. So I think, in the interest of expediting that and saving the town a lot of money, that should answer all the questions, and I'll walk through it very simply. And I think those seven requests for admissions, the answer is obviously admitted, it should include the case. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any other citizen participation? All right, unfinished old business, Z two thousand nineteen, one six two zero, Peter Higgins has been continued to February. Item B, Z two thousand nineteen, one six six one, continuation of Matthew Hogan, VNH Trailers and Plows, requesting site plan review for grading, earthwork, paving, installation of retaining wall, looming and seeding on property located at six Center Parkway, Plainfield Map seventeen, block eleven, lots I twenty-three and I twenty-four, industrial zoning district, IP, industrial parks.
Good evening, Madam Chair, admission members, I'm Daniel Lanchef, J and D Civil Engineers. I'm here on behalf of Matthew Hogan, the owner of VH Trailers. We had come before the commission about six months ago to discuss an expansion project as Matt's business in the industrial park. There have been a couple changes to the site plan that was approved, and so we're here before you this evening to gain additional approval for those changes. Just to refresh everyone's memory a little bit, Matthew is located on Center Parkway in the industrial park, towards the end of the cul-de-sac. He owns the business that was originally built in two thousand eleven for Connecticut Mott. Now, Matt's business is doing very well, he has too much inventory, not enough place to store it, so he purchased the lot to the west at the end of the cul-de-sac. This lot is about nine acres in size, however, five acres are wetlands, and they're in a permanent conservation unit. So he has about four acres of good land left to work with, and the proposal was to clear three acres and build three tiers of gravel inventory storage. And then again, another part of the project was some improvements on his existing lot. The proposal was to reduce the size of an island to improve traffic flow.
Excuse me. Gentlemen, if you guys want to have a conversation, if you could take it outside, because the noise in this room, it's going to interfere with our applicants, so much appreciated.
Would the microphone be helpful?
Your voice is okay.
I'm okay, let's try and speak loud.
You're fine.
Yes, shrink the size of the island, again, all of Matt's clients have large trailers, not what it was designed for, what it was Connecticut Mott. And then also add another gravel inventory storage area to the northeast corner of the lot. Now, so again, that was kind of what was previously proposed, this is what was approved in May. If you have any, go over it in more detail if anyone has any questions. But basically, to run through the changes, the biggest change was on the new three-acre lot. There was significant ledge encountered, and so there's no way we could have foreseen that. So instead of having three tiers or terraces of parking, there is now two tiers, and basically the lower tier was raised up about four, again, to alleviate some of the ledge and what, all the rock that we encountered. There is a retaining wall built on the downhill side, again, the lot's about ten, twelve percent, so there has to be some grading involved, small loading dock, again, so he can bring his forklifts and drop things off conveniently. Another big change is Matthew realized how convenient it is to have direct access to the second lot. It's more efficient for his business, and he really reduces the wear and tear in traffic on the town-owned Center Parkway. Instead of having to move trailers and plows back and forth on the town-owned road, again, we'd like to keep a little, again, not for clients or paying customers, but for his own internal use, to be able to move things back and forth quickly. So those are kind of the big changes to that lower lot, going to his existing lot that's developed. The big changes that Matthew's contractor decided to completely remove this island, again, they feel that for his clients, it's safer, there's fewer obstacles to hit, you don't have people backing up over curbs and so forth. So that was one change. The other big change is his contractor decided to use reclaimed asphalt on this storage area. Our original proposal was to have everything be gravel, again, we're not making almost any impervious area, reduces the need for any formal stormwater systems or drainage systems. Matt's contractor, maybe Matt can explain why, decided to use reclaimed asphalt here. And that caused some issues. The contractor maybe didn't scale correctly off my plan, and he did encroach by about six or eight feet on the Scope Tech's property, so there's been a little bit of pavement onto the neighbor's property that will be cut off and removed. Again, the use of this impervious surface also created some runoff and drainage issues to the popular wetlands, which again, Matt has been alleviated with some drainage structures. He got second approval from the Wetlands Commission last month, they didn't have any issues. That's pretty much it, I'll open it up to questions.
So what is the remediation plan to correct the overclearance and the encroaching on the other property?
I'm not aware of any overclearance.
Along the down road?
So I think there basically was, I think, one dead tree and some underbrush there, there wasn't much existing, you know, once we cleared off this area, there was kind of a natural hole there. And so Matthew's already planted a couple rows of conifers, which...
So planting a conifer?
Yes, which has already been done. And then again, annoying parts of the remediation, a couple issues, again, the part of the storage area was paved, it created some erosion of the soil into the wetlands, then we tried to fix that by making a plunge pool, using some riprap to slow down that water. Unfortunately, we went a little bit too far, the contractor placed some riprap within the wetlands, so there were about sixty-two square feet of wetlands that were inadvertently disturbed. Basically, the work that was done was hand placing of small stones, and so we've now gotten approval to take those stones out by hand without losing any major equipment. I don't believe there'll be any permanent damage done to the wetlands, and again, we have... And again, we have, where are we? Here we go. Couple notes on our plan, again, about the goals of that and how to accomplish it.
Did I hear you say the curbing and island was completely removed?
Yes, we're, yep.
So what's the plan to restore to the original site plan that was removed? Or is there a plan to restore?
Yeah, I don't believe there is a plan. I think for Matt's use, again, this was not designed for a lot of large trailers to be brought in for repairs and work. The traffic flow wasn't really set up for large trucks. And Matt feels that with his clients, the best solution was to completely remove the island.
I remove the island, it just tests the ability to pull up on the truck and trailer. We actually pull in and turn it out. We are leaving trailers in this area, to keep them away. Keep them away from the light pole. Also gives us the ability to open up in case we have a lot of space. Keep, basically, we have a lot of congestion issues, drivers coming in, out, pose. Getting dropped off while we're trying to deliver trailers, and there's constantly blocking. So leaving this area more open gives us the ability to keep the traffic flowing. We have not had any customers waiting or trucks waiting.
Could you point out on the plan where the inventory, inventory storage areas were previously removed?
Yes. Okay, here's the, here's our original plan from May. We're showing it in this orange color here, here's one storage area. And then again, kind of a terrace with one at elevation 170, another at elevation 160, and then one at elevation 154.
And where's inventory being kept now?
Wherever he can. I think they're actually borrowing some land from friends, right, to store some of it?
Some down agway.
Get some agway, he was trying to parallel some on the road. Do you think his ability? And some parallel parking, right?
Yes.
Okay, so the applicant does understand that once lot 24 has been improved, that inventory needs to be kept in the areas that are indicated for it?
Yes, I think that was outlined in one of Ryan's letters or conditions.
Any other questions from board members on this application? Any additional comments from staff?
Just what's in my report.
So this is a site plan review, it's a modification to a previously approved site plan. So the floor is open for board members' discussion on the application.
Is a light pole existing?
Yes, there are two light posts here. Again, this light post is kind of at the end of this remaining island, so this one is well protected. So there's basically one light post that's kind of floating in space. But again, as Matt has outlined, he has a good idea, a good strategy on how to protect that. He still has the flexibility he needs.
Any other items of discussion for board members? Ryan, I'll entertain a motion on the application. And I would ask the board to consider the suggestions that Ryan outlined.
Is the applicant aware of what Ryan's suggestions were? I think so, yeah.
I was going to say the reference, that's still my assumption there. But thank you for clearing. All right, so I'll read them into the record, just so there's no misunderstanding whatsoever. Staffman's suggestions, suggested conditions of approval. The conifers planted along Down Road to remediate the overclearing must be maintained in good condition or replaced until the natural vegetation takes over and provides adequate screening. The curbing at 6th Center Parkway, lot 23, shall be restored to the May 2019 approved plans. Center of islands shall be cut, soft cut, filled with loom and seeded. Crushed stone or wood chips could be used as an alternative. The encroachment onto Scope Technologies' property shall be remediated by June 1st, 2020. The six-foot retaining wall on lot 24 will require a building permit. An as-built of the improvements and clearing limits is required prior to the CO. The approved plans shall be printed to Mylar and filed in Town Clerk's Office after being signed by the Commission Chair. Once the improvements to lot 24 have been completed, all trailers and inventory will be removed from areas not approved for inventory storage. So could you point out exactly where the island was that was completely removed with no plan to restore?
Well, see, if we go back, this will be a little bit clearer. Again, the original plan that was approved, sorry, this whole thing was an island. The original proposal was to cut out what's in orange, so that there'd be two pieces on the side. The original plan was to cut out the middle strip of it. And leave a piece here to define the parking. And then this island here has, what do you call it?
Racks.
Racks or?
Yeah, it's racks.
Racks of plows, basically.
So he's aware, he's putting, according to Ryan's specifications, he's putting that island back in?
Oh.
It's a suggestion, the board can consider.
That's what the conditions were. That was suggested, that's because you decided to want better. I had not, I had not talked to the applicant to find out what his reasoning was for moving that, so you heard it later.
So it was to allow for trailer movement?
Yeah, it sounds like Matt is, for all intents and purposes, using some trailers to provide some traffic flow and protect those lights. But again, giving himself the option, if he needs it, of pulling them out and driving all the way. Again, it's in Matt's.
My point here is, if we approve of these conditions, this island's got to be back in.
I think we prefer to not have that condition be part of your approval. I think Matt's preference is, is to leave the whole thing removed.
Ryan, is there any essential function to that?
Just to protect the cars that's in there in the light pole and provide some order to the parking.
Set your expression if you want to.
I don't think Matt would do anything that would endanger his clients or...
We're essentially using it more because we killed trucks. We're using this area to, to store a lot of these trucks in this area. As much as it's parking, we have a, we don't use these parking lots for parking vehicles here now.